The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery and filing of this notice on January 9, two thousand and twenty-three. This notice was on those dates posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier-News, and tapped into Warren and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please join me in rising for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Right. I will call the poll. Mr. DeSey? Mrs. Feitbaum? Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Otto?
Here.
Mr. Tor? Mr. Valentino?
Here.
Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Mrs. Zahn?
Here.
Mr. Brzee?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act NJSA ten four dash eleven permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters, now therefore be resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss a collective bargaining agreement and/or negotiations related to it. Specific prospective or current employees unless all who could be adversely affected request an open session, and pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiation and/or matters of attorney-client privilege. Action will be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately forty-five minutes, and be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, I got Mr. Otto. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the board will go to one of the front rooms for executive session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, favor.
Hi.
I oppose subventions. The board is now back in public session.
Resolve that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the June 12th, 2020.
We want to do the retreat.
Oh, God. Well, I've moved this now. Can we just move this?
Yeah, sure, sure.
2023 board meeting. My apologies.
Second. All right. I wasn't expecting to take a roll call.
I took it out.
All right. I will call the roll. This is on the minutes.
Yeah.
Mr. De Segue.
Yes.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Otto.
Yes.
Mr. Tor.
Yes.
Mr. Valentino.
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
This is on.
Yes.
Mr. Rizzi.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Well, we have, uh, jo- we're joined by Mr. Giacobi for our
Well, we have, uh, jo- we're joined by Mister Giacobi for our annual Board of Education Retreat, and I think we're going into ethics training. Is that, no, it's next on our list? Thank you.
Updated. We updated each year that is.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
You might need to use a microphone so it's for the recording. You could take mine if you want.
Or one of the empty one chairs.
So what I've handed out is a overview of the School Ethics Act. And then I have cases throughout it to just give you a flavor of what the School Ethics Commission has ruled upon. So let me just summarize what the School Ethics Act is. The School Ethic Act is a law that has guidelines by which board members have to follow. And if you don't follow them, people can file ethics charges against you. You don't go to ethics jail, so don't worry. Um, but they file ethics charges against you in a body called the School Ethics Commission, which is part of the state DOE, uh, determines whether or not you violated the School Ethics Act. That's basically the overview of how these things proceed. And the School Ethics Act, the School Ethics Commission can do a couple of things. They can dismiss it outright. They think it's frivolous. Uh, and if there's a hearing, they can do, they can remove you from the board. That's very, very rare. They could suspend you for a period of time. That's also very rare. They can issue censures or reprimands. Censure is a little bit more harsh than reprimand, but it's basically the same thing. It's, you did something wrong. It's published on the website. The world knows that you did something wrong. And that's the, the penalty. There's no monetary penalties with it because you're all volunteers. But what the School Ethics Commission adjudicates is the act, and I won't go through each and every aspect of the act because it's all laid out in the handout. But what I can tell you about is that, and I'm involved in a couple of ethics cases right now. I've been involved either prosecuting them against board members or defending board members. And when I say prosecuting them, it means that a Board of Education got together, voted to file ethics charges. And they've asked me as board counsel to prosecute the case. That's fairly rare, and I don't really recommend that. I usually try to recommend meeting with the individual uh, and counseling them because a lot of people don't understand what they can and what they can't do. So where are people, board members getting in trouble right now? Well, the biggest area of trouble, bar none, is social media. Social media is absolutely where board members get in the most trouble. And the first thing is, is that when you post on social media, the School Ethics Commission says that you have to put up a disclaimer that these are your own views, not that of the board. They don't want you putting things out on social media where somebody could say, oh, I can't believe that the Warren Towns Board of Education has that position when it's your own personal opinion. So you're supposed to have a disclaimer on the school ethics, on your, you know, Facebook page, et cetera. That was the way it was until very recently. There's a recent case where they said, even though you had a disclaimer, that didn't matter. You still violated the act. And I'll give you an example of a case that, that where a board member was removed. Um, it was a board member, uh, up in Lodi, New Jersey. You can read about it. Um, and what he did, he was actually the board president. He hated the Lodi Education Association President, hated her. And so he had a, he has a blog site, some type of transparency website. Um, this guy sits in his basement and, and, you know, blogs constantly. He's, you know, very active blogger. And he said, this is my own opinion, n- n- not the boards, et cetera. And then he would just blast and go after her. Now, remember, he was the board president and blasting her. And he kept on doing it and doing it and doing it. And so what happened was the NJEA, their attorney filed ethics charges against him on behalf of this member. And he ultimately was removed from the board because you can't hide behind, I gave a disclaimer, but then go after a, a, a person. So it's not like a go free from jail card, these disclaimers. But let's hypothetically say that on your Twitter account or on your, um, Facebook account, you're getting involved in county politics and you want to back certain people for the Freeholder Board or, or Commissioner Board versus somebody else or somebody for the sheriff. You could do that. You have a First Amendment right, but you just have to say, this is my own opinions or my own views. This is not on behalf of the board. So it's very, very important. Now, what's happened is I'm involved in a case right now where I'm defending a school board member in Westfield. And, uh, there's been more ethics filings now than ever before. I mean, they're, they're exploding in terms of, because people now are using them. Um, if somebody doesn't like you, they'll use it almost like a weapon. And what happened there is, is that there's a board member. She's a Muslim American. She, uh, is from Egypt. She's a law professor. She's like super highly regarded on, uh, publishes on Islamophobia. Um, you know, Palestinian human rights, et cetera. And what happened is, is there's a group that convinced the local municipalities to adopt the International Holocaust Remembrance Committee's definition of antisemitism. So yeah, we're gonna do that. They did it. But what they didn't realize is that if you take any position that's against the State of Israel, under that definition, it's antisemitic. And what this, what, there's these groups out there that are now going after this professor. She's a law professor. And they said, you have things on your social media site that we think are antisemitic because they're not supportive of Israel and they're going after her. So we're, it's a whole First Amendment battle. So you just have to be mindful that I tell folks, stay off of social media. If you're on a board, it just, nothing good comes of it. It can adversely affect your job. Um, it could adversely affect your family. If people, people say things on social media and if it's not, you know, go, uh, you know, like the local football team or something. If there's any controversial, for everybody that likes it, there's going to be fifty percent of the people who hate it. So in my experience, the social media is where board members are getting themselves in the most trouble. Um, and board members very often, uh, get in trouble when they start talking about personnel matters on social media. And you'd say, uh, they don't do that, but they do. They do it all the time. And they may not use the person's name, but they'll be talking about a position. And what ends up happening is, is that teacher or that staff member will file ethics charges. Or in the case of the example I gave you, the NJEA will get involved and they have a free attorney and the NJEA will file the ethic charges. And if they have a free attorney, it's not costing the person anything. And the NJA is paying the legal fees for this person to prosecute these ethics cases. So it's the type of thing where you just want to be mindful that when you're on a board, you went into closed session before. And when you're in closed session, board's going to close session a lot, lot more than municipalities do. A lot more. You go into every meeting, you go into closed session and you're talking about personnel. You're talking about students. You're talking about contract negotiations. But I can tell you the one thing that the School Ethics Commission has no tolerance for is when board members reveal confidential information, especially involving staff and students. Staff and students, staff members have a right to privacy. But you're not, may not like them. You may not like what they, what they did or said, but they have a right to privacy. And students have a right to privacy. They're, both state and federal law protect that right to privacy. And that the only people that you can share that information with is their parents. And so they don't want staff, board members ever commenting on a staff member or a student or an HAB matter, especially on social media. And you can't believe how many times board members do that. And they get thems- and that's when the School Ethics Commission will remove you from the board if you violate somebody's privacy rights. I have a case, it's actually reported in there where this was before social media, but a board member found out that a teacher had shown up intoxicated at a school. The superintendent says, I'm just letting you folks know, this is, we're dealing with it. The person was taken to the hospital. They have a very bad alcohol problem. Uh, they didn't actually come into the school. They were passed out in a car in the parking lot. We're taking care of it. Please keep this highly confidential to staff member. Well, this board member took it. This is when NJ.com had their, their blog kind of a precursor to what we have today. And he posted the whole thing right on, so on the NJ.com. The person's name. It said confidential, do not tell. And he posted it. They removed him from the board. They said, you're out of your mind. You can't be on a board if you're revealing confidential information like that. The reason that the School Ethics Commission, and I could tell you what's really unique is the School Ethics Act and the School Ethics Commission is much stricter than the Ethics Act that applies to municipal elected officials. And one of the reasons is, is that board members, for, uh, very many board members have children in the school system. So the way they drafted the laws and they did this is they really want board members to be one step back from day-to-day operations because I'm a parent of four kids. I know how, how every parent is, is you, you look, you're looking after your kid's best interest at all times. And so they wanted to just take that away and they make boards policymaking bodies as opposed to running day-to-day operations. Where when you're dealing with like a mayor and a council in a town or commission, or, you know, I call them freeholders or commissioners at the kind of level, they're much more date, involved in day-to-day operations. They serve on committees. They're interacting with, um, staff members, et cetera. Board members don't do that. The flip side is, is that, and I've said this before, the budget that you craft has by far the biggest impact on your tax dollars. If you look at the way your budget is broken up in, in the municipal budget, you guys are probably sixty-five percent of the overall tax levy of your municipality. And when you have a well-run school system and you do that through policy, um, it affects positively your property values. So board members have a lot of power, huge amount of power, probably more power, more impact on the lives of people, uh, than say, you know, commissioners at the county level do. Um, the thing that you want to remember too is when you're dealing with, um, the School Ethics Commission, you have the ability to get advisory opinions. They will issue an advisory opinion on si- situations before you act. They will not issue, if you vote and you made a mistake, they won't issue a go free from jail card. But if you're concerned about something, if there's something that you say this might be unethical, speak to, uh, your superintendent and they can get in touch with us. Very often there, there is a case out there that we could say, that's not unethical. You can go ahead and do that. Here's a case. But if it's a unique situation, they can then give an advisory opinion that will allow you to act or not act. And I think I gave you the example, uh, last year where I had a board member who was an official with NJSIAA. And she wanted to make sure that at the county meets, if one of the kids from the school district, you know, was participating before in a gymnastics event, would that be unethical? They ruled that it would not. Interestingly, the School Ethics Commission has very, very strict protocols on, uh, conflicts of interest. And in my, uh, handout, there's a chart about, you know, if, if you're, what you can do in terms of negotiations, what you can do in terms of evaluating Dr. Mingle, et cetera. What's very interesting is the School Ethics Commission was taking, uh, a very, I'd say confusing reading of other relative. Because basically you can't have anything that has an indirect or direct impact on yourself or your family or relative. And they're taking other relative and expanding it out. It was like second cousins once removed. And people are saying, how could that be a conflict? June twenty-seventh, it's in your packet. It goes through and defines what constitutes the other relative that would be, uh, forming a conflict. So most items or most decisions that you make as a board member, they're not decisions you have to make in haste, not have to make split-second decisions. If there's something that concerns you, ask Dr. Mingle. Dr. Mingle can reach out to me. I can give you guidance. Or in certain instances, we can get you an advisory opinion. And it's especially useful if you're a newer board member. We can get you an advisory opinion. I'll give you an example. I have a board member uh, in, on a board up in Burn County who's, I have to remember how this goes. It's her step, it's like her half-brother's son's wife is a teacher in the district is out of conflict. Well, the, the, what the School Ethics Commission just came out with, they said, no, that's not a conflict now based on their new definition. And so we had actually asked for an advisory opinion and they lumped them all together and they issued it. So this woman's half-brother's son's wife is not a conflict. That's, and she's new to the board and we got that advisory opinion so that she could take action on the board. She was recently appointed and she could take action on the board. Um, so if you know of something that you're concerned with, let us know and we can get an advisory opinion. They take about six weeks. You, you write a letter. Um, we send it in on your behalf and then they'll discuss it at the next, uh, School Ethics Commission meeting. Uh, they'll roll on it. So if you catch it right, you can get it usually within four weeks. Longest about six weeks. Um, the other thing that, that I think, um, you know, is important is that as a board member, you don't give up your rights to be a parent. I mean, I'm sure, how many of you guys have children in the school system? Okay, most of you do. You don't give up your right being a parent to your kids. You just have to be mindful though, that when you're going to a teacher conference, et cetera, you're a board member. Staff members, you know, th- they, it could be somewhat intimidating. You want to just take off your board hat and you're there to be a parent. You never want to say, well, I'm a board member. You never want to tie the two together. Keep them separate. You're there as a parent. You're not there as a board member. Um, if you're concerned about a way a teacher is interacting with you, my advice is get Dr. Mingle, Mingle involved. Um, you know, you don't want to be in a situation where, you know, somebody's making accusations. Oh, you're doing this because you're a board member. You're trying to exercise influence over me. I remind board members, and this is an important thing to always remember. You're an employer. Collectively, you employ Dr. Mingle, you employ Mr. Hegel, but you employ everybody. You're the employer of all these folks. And so you just have to remember, and guess what? We're all employees someplace else. You have to remember and put yourself uh, in, in the teacher's position or the staff member's position. If, you know, the CEO of the company contacted me to sit down and talk to me about something, how would I feel? But a lot of people say, oh, my goodness, I have to meet with the, you know, somebody on the board, the, the Board of Directors. It's the same concept. These are your employees and just be mindful because they're your biggest asset. They're your biggest expense and you're really there to look out for their well-being. And that's why there's so much training because on, not only with just with Board of Education members, but with all your staff so that they conduct themselves appropriately with fellow staff members, with children, et cetera. So you never give up your right to be a parent. You never give a right to advocate for your kids. You never give a right to file for due process on behalf of your kid if they need to get an IP. But just be mindful that when you're dealing with these folks, especially, especially some of these newer, uh, teachers who have just come into the profession, they're going to see you as, oh, my goodness, this is the boss. This is the, you know, what do I do? And it could be a little bit intimidating. So I would suggest that, and if you do have an, an issue with a teacher, uh, with the interaction, I get Dr. Mingle involved early, uh, on so that, you know, nothing gets kind of out of control. I don't know if you guys have any questions? The only other thing I just want to touch upon, um, is we've talked about social media. The other thing that you have to be very, very mindful of is Oprah, the Open Public Records Act. Uh, there's so much, oh, the two areas of litigation right now for school boards are school ethics acts violations and Oprah violations. And on the Open Public Records Act, any email that you write, whether it's from your work email, your Gmail, your OAL account, if it touches on the school district, it's a public record. A text message is a public record. So we're getting ta- we're getting Oprah requests. Uh, they're getting more and more complex, but somebody will literally be watching at home and say, oh, I saw, I saw the superintendent and he was, looks like he was texting with, uh, Ms. Keller. I want all the text messages between the superintendent, Ms. Keller from five oh nine to, and you're getting that type of detail and you have to produce them. And, you know, you just got to be mindful that whatever you're writing, whether it's on your cell phone or in an email, there's a high likelihood that if it's there, people are going to find out about it. The only thing that is exempt really are student records, personnel records, and attorney-client privileged advice. Just merely see, seeing the attorney on it doesn't make an advice. And the courts are betting over backwards to say, that's a public record. That's a public record. So more and more things are being, um, through transparency are being shared with the public. So just be mindful. I tell folks, if you have something that you're a little concerned with, there's this great invention that Alexander Graham Bell came up with. It's called telephone. Pick it up and make a phone call. Uh, unless somebody's recording you, that you're not creating a record. Um, and so just be mindful of the Open Public Records Act and only, only, only use your official. Use your official email for this for business. The reason one is. That Mr. Hegel, when he gets an Oprah request, he only has to go to one place to look. You can go to your emails if they're looking for board member emails and he knows with confidence that that's the only place he has to look. Secondly, many of your employers, if you're using your email for business other than their job, you're putting yourself in your job at risk. And I had one board member who actually ended up getting fired. She worked for a bank. Um it was a subpoena situation, but she was using her bank email for board business and there was a subpoena and they found out she was doing it. And she's no longer working for that bank. So just be mindful of those two areas because those are areas that are fraught with a lot of danger. Social media and emails. That's the ethics trading for today.
Any additional follow-up questions?
I want a quick one. You mentioned about, don't, you know, you're still an advocate of your child and then you follow up with emails. If you're emailing from your personal email. To your, your child's staff or teachers or administration about your child, is that?
No, that that's how you should do it. Yeah. So you again, you want to separate the two. So if you have a Gmail and you're. Um your kid's not doing his or her homework, or let's say they're having a rough time at home and you'd say teachers want to let you know. Your this, my child's experienced some difficulty. This is what's going on. Use your private email. Don't use your board email because that would be very intimidating to your staff. And that's not a public record. Cause you're acting as a mom or a dad or, you know, a parent. That's not a public record.
Thank you. The. Last follow-ups. Mr. Jacoby, thank you very much for visiting us this evening. Appreciate all your uh information you have to share.
Matt, if you want, I'll just save these here in case you get, in case you get Oprah request for.
What's that? Oh, wow, they come gift that. Thank you.
Yes, the uh the goals. Okay, so the other, the other big uh item that's on the agenda in the retreat every year is. A chance for me to give you a preview of kind of the goal work that's going on at the administrative level, but we also have the board goals. So. I shared it, I think, two updates ago, the board self-evaluation results. Um the comprehensive results were in the update. Then I wanted to highlight that the board gave the board. Its highest ratings in the time I've been here in several areas, which I think is something that is worth celebrating in the areas of. Uh board leadership, mission and goals, policy and governance, financial oversight, student achievement and performance monitoring. Board staff relations and board superintendent relations. And you can see the entire, like an eight-year history when you look in that document. Typically, at this point of the meeting, we find the places that are lower and we come up with goals around them. Um what I would recommend to you is that. In years where there's negotiations, that is usually a board goal is to negotiate a successor collective bargaining agreement. That would be the case with the Warren Township Education Association this year. We know that we pushed um adopting a five-year capital plan from last year to next year. So that would be one. And then since we adopted the strategic plan in twenty twenty, we've been including a goal that says support the implementation of year four strategic plan priorities. So my recommendation on the board goal side of things is to stick with those um. Unless there's other ideas that came out of that evaluation that people think we should address something with.
Anyone, any board member have? Thoughts, perspective, feedback, comments, criticisms? Applause. Applause. I like applause.
I'm embarrassed to say that I. Got distracted for a second. Would you mind repeating?
Sure.
I appreciate.
I'm just recommending. The five-year capital plan adoption, the new contract with the WTEA, and then supporting the strategic plan. I didn't pull anything out of the actual evaluation to recommend.
Thank you. Uh there is one thing that I I do want to um add as a. A distinct board goal is to develop a goal around um seeking to improve the uh culture. At the Warrenville School. Should I elaborate?
I'm okay with that. I just want to clarify. Yeah, okay.
I mean, I, I mean, this may be a good opportunity to draw the distinction between district goals and board goals, right? Because um. You know, how this develops and how it's written, it may end up actually looking more like a district goal than a board goal. But somewhere in the process of goal development. I do feel strongly that we have seen a progression um of late. Of an increase in HIB investigations and um. Those investigations have revolved around behavior that seems to be more. Warranty intervention than we have typically seen for the middle school in the past. And I would like to see us as a board. Or with the direction from the superintendent at district level, developing a goal that seeks to directly address. That, that problem. Am I the only person here that thinks there's a problem? Jump in, people.
No, agreed.
Okay, agreed, agreed.
Nick, I'm on the connection.
Yeah, please.
So um. Maybe it'll be clearer conversation after I go through the district goal proposals. The, the part that we would need to clarify is if it's a, a board goal is meant to be some of the work that you all do. Um so I'm not exactly sure what the, what the board's work is there versus what our work is um. But maybe I can explain the district goal proposals and then we can kind of circle back. That might make.
That would be helpful.
So in the, as far as the district goal, the year four strategic plan priorities. First of all, the process that gets to where we are now is we have a strategic plan which. Has a whole list of things that need to be addressed over the course of five years. You all know that we have voice and engagement working groups that meet throughout the year. Those groups gather public input through a survey which happened in April, May um. To process that feedback and then the leadership team spends time early in the summer. Kind of distilling that down. We bring gear for a first reading and then we iterate that over the next month or two to get to a final approval. So we've organized our proposed goals. Into three buckets, which are similar to the ones we've used the past years. One on student achievement. One on belonging and then one on operations. And I'll go through each of the three. Student achievement has three sub areas. Basically, it's to improve student outcomes at ELA, English Language Arts. To improve student outcomes in mathematics. And to improve student outcomes in social emotional competencies. And for the elementary school parents or staff members, community members. Last year, we began reporting on social emotional competencies right on the report card. So we actually have a way to measure and track at the elementary level for now. How students are developing and things like self-management, self-regulation, which ties into some of that conversation. So we have, we're working on a set of action plans around those areas of student achievement. In the belonging goal, uh and sorry, the the priority this year is really on making sure that the the best practices that we know. Are being, are being used consistently across all classrooms in the district so that it's not. A pocket of excellence in one place, but then someplace else, those kinds of things aren't taking place um. And to ensure that everybody on the staff, but also adults in the community, understand what we even mean by social emotional competencies and what that looks like so that we're all using the same language. In the belonging goal. We kind of have that into subsets and this is actually the place where I think the middle school question comes into play. So where we have it right now, and and that committee, that subcommittee includes the middle school principal. So uh each of these committees has administrators on it. The belonging goal committee. Is chaired by a district administrator, but it includes Mr. Cook and Mr. Valar as the building principal representatives. And they've worked, they've kind of analyzed, come up with two categories. One is the cultural proficiency of educators. That is how are our staff members prepared to recognize. Differences among students and staff and community members and ensure that they are teaching in a way that is respectful and um. Cognizant of changing demographics in the community, but also in the world around them. So there's one side that's more of a staff input PD professional development, professional learning side. And then the other half is increased student sense of belonging. And there's a list of, these are very draft, but a list of sort of guiding principles. So increase student belonging by creating spaces where all students are empowered to develop their authentic selves. Where we get to know students evolving stories, their strengths, their ambitions and their needs. Where we provide programming that fosters student wellness and resilience. That we ensure dignity dignity and kindness for all in all situations. And that we build bridges across race, culture and identity to create a community where all are valued. Within those sort of guiding principles, there are certain things that are district-wide, but. And again, we're only in drafting of the action plans at this point. We've looked at the middle school in a couple of areas. One that I share with the board in a memo, but I'll say publicly is. We're aiming that for when the students who are entering sixth grade this coming school year, by the time they graduate middle school, so over the course of the next three years. We are positioned in a, in a way to be eligible for a National School of Character Award at the middle school, which is a a very high. Bar um national program for how you look at the programming you do and how how students feel in school and so on. And second, uh I'm working with Mr. Valar and Ms. Mensinger to develop. A to be named, but a program around student leadership in these areas where we can actually um identify. Our student voices to take the lead on ensuring the belonging and the climate and culture issues that you're talking about. That's the belonging category. Operations. Is carrying over the safety and security in the capital plans, which are pretty straightforward. Adopt those plans, implement them.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Follow up, yeah, please.
Yes, if I may follow up. That's great. And I think as district goals, um that's great. I do think that there's room here for a bold board goal as well. Perhaps it's around uh communications. Um perhaps it's around the board, making sure that um we've made available to the public a complete understanding of this. Three-year program that we're going to try to seek some, you know, maybe it's around that. Um around um the efforts that are being made throughout our school district, but also, you know, really focusing in on our. Um young adults, our, our middle school age students about what we are doing to, in fact. A create a sense of belonging and to the extent that that's measurable, make sure that we are sharing that with the public. We as elected officials were were answerable and these questions are coming up and. You know, we're seeing them in in parents arriving at the board meetings and saying, you know, they see. The number of HIB investigations that are listed just numerically on agendas. They see those numbers. They have a sense. That this is more, this is more than it has been in the past. Uh they are saying that to me. I'm sure that they are saying that to other board members as well. Um we are hearing from parents um in the middle school who have. Children who are, do not experience a sense of belonging and that those parents are coming to us and and saying that. So I I I do not want as myself, as a board member, to be sitting here mute. To, to the people who elected us. We're not speaking to them in a way that demonstrates that we. Regard this as a material and important thing to address and that we are receiving the information. That is seen that's being addressed and we are sharing that with the public. I think then we're failing our constituents. I would be remiss if we didn't, you know, mention the acts of vandalism. Just this last week in our community that were anti-Semitic and racist in nature. Um who knows who did that, but there, and it's not the first time. We've seen these going back for as long as, you know, I've lived here and Hothmire Grotto used to get a whole bunch of this, right? But there is definitely a sense that I am getting from the community and from the parents that they feel that this is a moment. Um where inclusion and equity for their students. That they're not comfortable that that is being experienced particularly among our young teenagers.
Thank you, Mrs. On. Thank you, Dr. Mingle, for the district. So do we want to revisit the board? Goals, go back to that now that we have the district goals uh shared as well to.
Yes.
Okay, please go ahead, Mr. Weinstein.
No, I I agree with Mrs. On in terms of the middle school goal. Um. I'm, I'm happy and willing to make that part of our board goals. I think it is our responsibility and I think we should be part of. The solution-making process. I think the challenge I have with this one, which should not, in my opinion, cross out the goal. I think it's just something we've got to answer. And I think, Dr. Mingle, you may have answered part of it. Improving the culture at Warren Middle School, I agree a hundred percent, but how do we measure it? And maybe it's with the, I wrote this down, and if I get it wrong, tell me, the National School of Character Award. Would, would that be like a measurable way to say that we've done it or is that too off your incorrect in terms of how we'd actually measure it to make sure that we're making progress? And I don't know, I'm legitimately asking because I don't know how we would measure it.
So that's, so we're working on that from the district goal side. So we. Uh for the last two years now, one full year, but into into two years ago, we've been surveying students around. Questions related to climate and culture. So we actually know what the students think. Um and so we've identified the questions that get at those topics. Um somewhat relatedly, we did an audit. With an outside group for our social emotional learning programs. There are some questions there that also kind of get at it. So we can use those questions. The, the only problem with the National School of Character one, I don't think this means it shouldn't be part of how we measure, is that it's longer term and you're going to want to be able to say. What progress we make this year. It's also not, we could do everything we're supposed to do and still not be selected for it. So we don't. Um so I think that should be one of the things we look long-term, but we need some uh, you know, on-the-fly update as well.
Once you have the plan in place and then you know what you want to measure. Is there use in perhaps repeating the same survey every year with the same questions to get kind of an ATU approach?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and we didn't make, and those questions come from a nationally normed and validated survey. So, yeah.
No, I had uh, I had one question for middle school. So sometimes a thought. Just cause crosses my mind, how. Prepare our middle school students to be successful in high school academically and culturally? Is there, do we, I don't know, um just a thought, just. Do we, do we talk to, do we get some feedback from high school? I I I don't know, I'm just curious. Maybe, maybe not related to this, but is.
No, it's a good, it's tied to the student achievement um goals. Every year, early in the year, this, they give a, the, the high school provides each of the sending districts uh a data set. Not names, but total numbers of students who went into upper level classes. And which school districts they came from, how they did on AP tests, SAT, all that sort of thing. So we do get that kind of um. Information about how our students are doing after they get out of middle, middle school. Internally, we, as you know, we measure using both the state assessments, which are now back in place, but also eye-ready and other internal assessments. So that we could see the progress as we're going on. That doesn't get at the, that's on the academic side. That doesn't get at long-term. Social or cultural issues uh or development. That is a, an ongoing question with the report card discussion, you know, it. The SEL competencies that are on the elementary. Report card, the conversation about what that should look like at the middle school is a focus for this coming year.
Like, what is the answer? Like, how, how are we doing? How is the middle school?
So the, the data always shows our students doing well at the high school. Um that's the, the problem with that is it's. When you look at a whole, you know, at two hundred kids who left the uh class and we find out that most kids are doing well. We're very concerned about the stu, students who might not be doing well. So we always have a small population. We talk about eighth grade general math. Here regularly when we look at student achievement, you know, it's a, overall, our students are doing well. We're really focusing in on the small number of students who aren't. So we actually already this summer. With Mr. Kimick's leadership, our principals and our administrators have looked at, we already have initial NJ SLA data. Where we can find how many students are at the levels one and two, the lowest levels. And we did an activity at a retreat where we. Identified those students and then built a data set of what are all the interventions that were in place for those students last year. And are there any students who didn't succeed, who were not al- already on our radar? So are there any kids that are? We've actually had this conversation at this day as before that are sort of in the middle. They, they don't qualify for maybe special education or academic support. English or the second language services, but then they didn't pass the state test. So we're doing that right now. For this, the small numbers, so that by the time we get to the school year, we've already built the new plans for those kids. Yeah.
Thank you. Just a couple of thoughts on the um, the culture goal. Cause we're gonna have to figure out how we go about accomplishing whatever the improvement metrics are. Um, and if this is happening already, great, and maybe there's nuance within these three groups. And if this is happening already, great, and maybe there's nuance within these three groups. Obviously, we want to improve improve the culture at the school, but I think it includes three key stakeholders, right? And no specific order, students should absolutely have a voice in. How to problem solve, right? Because they're they're living it every day. So I think they should have the opportunity to be able to provide. Whatever their thoughts are on solving whatever culture things need to be addressed. I think the staff should have an opportunity to. Voice whatever they see as good, bad or otherwise, right? Because they're living it every day as well from a different perspective. And I think it goes back to. The the stakeholder stuff with the parents, right? So I think parents should have an opportunity to to probably weigh in as well. The weighting of those three, I don't know, but I'm thinking that it's not just one. Group of individuals that can help and the board. But but it's not just one group that's going to drive the the change. I think it has to come from everybody. And I think to me, if you've got voice from at least those three groups, and there's probably more. It would be helpful so that it doesn't feel like it's being pushed by one singular group of people.
Respect, I agree with you. What what is the? My brain is in the mode of a board goal. What is the board's role in that, I guess? And that's what I'm asking you to try to form a goal in support of it. I'm not against it. I'm just trying to understand what does this board do? For students, parents. Staff.
Yeah, fair. Um. My first response would be, I don't know, and then let me try and answer it. Um, so I I think we could probably serve as a. An organizational body to collect the feedback from those groups. How that happens, I'm not sure. But I I just feel like it. It might be a miss if we don't get feedback from each of them. So maybe we're like the. The data collectors or the galvanizing body that has the ability to be able to get some of that feedback. Uh, I'm not sure.
Is the. Is the board drawn on? Once the plan's in place and everyone's comfortable. Governance, procedural policies, curriculum and all the committees that exist to make sure that. The right things are in place to execute on that and hopefully when you will, but if not, improve that survey on the way through. Versus what I heard the the attorney say earlier. Which is we're not an operational body. So we can't in the end execute, but we can make sure that the environment is created in which. The plan can be executed. I said that as a newbie because maybe we should be more aware, but I know. I think so.
I was actually thinking of this, uh, you know, from the board's role perspective as being one of communication. When it comes to data collection, et cetera, we we're the nine of us, we're not going to go and collect data. What we do is we. Um, give guidance to the administration as to what it is we'd like to see in the administration, then goes and works very hard to gather the data to give back to us. To me, this all feels from our perspective like a communication. Driven goal. And and frankly, focusing more on communication is probably warranted anyway, because in addition to the concerns that I've already expressed and I think are shared regarding. Culture in our schools, in particular in the middle school, we've also heard a lot from parents about um what they feel is. Um, a desire for greater communication. Um, and you know, that's not my committee or my specialty. So I should kick that to the chair of the committee.
Is this, this is a feedback. I'm just trying to make sure I understand, so I apologize.
Sure, no.
Feedback from this board or feedback from a school? Or both, I don't know the.
Feedback, I'm not, did I use?
I'm sorry, communication. You did that right, I said it wrong.
Yeah, no, I think that I think that the the Board of Education as a body, its communication out to. Our constituents maybe should be um thought through.
Okay.
As to, you know, is there a mechanism? But we don't really do that, right? The board doesn't communicate.
I don't have it in front of me. One of the, the other one, yeah, I'm trying to. Stakeholder. Sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, you, you, this is good. I like the expression.
I mean, inevitably, if it's our desire to be expressed into the community, it's like, you know, we have this um. Desire to improve the, you know, the the culture. We should all take a second to define that, by the way, uh, culture within the middle school. Um. That our communication committee maybe could be working to come up with a plan of how we deliver. Progress on that, or even how we define what it is we regard as inappropriate and in, you know, culture with for that age group. I'm just throwing a lot on my.
No, no, I mean, I I agree. I think there's also, and I know we haven't dug into the. Our actual board self evaluation, but I think one of the areas that came up is the community relations. Piece of this. So I think there's the communications that go out when you're an active parent in. Both the elementary school and the middle schools, there are the weekly briefings, there's all sorts of ways to stay informed, but there is that. That connection between the schools. Us, though, you know, as a whole, and the broader community, people who, which is a much bigger universe of people who may or may not have kids or actively in the district. And so I do, I that this could help, you know, address that. I just want to confirm. And the scope of this is communication specifically about the middle school culture piece, right? Not broader about. Other happenings or anything.
Well, you know, it's a developing thought process, right? As we all sit here and exchange ideas. Um. I I, you know, it might actually be the reverse, it might be the development of the communication mechanism that the board utilizes, and this is an example of the kind of information that would go out. So um, you know, I I know that's. Uh, even I'm struggling to like pin down exactly what the board goal is here. Um. Right now, I think that the board communicates to the public in one way, and that is this. A meeting. And we, you know, that's it. Right? And um. Is that enough? Is it um effective? Um. It, you know, we have committee reports, should we be including their um, you know. Something else? I'm not sure. I I, you know, I I wish I could sit here right now and say, oh, no, I have, I have a solution. I just feel a compelling. Um obligation. To be actively and. Um publicly. You know, talking to people that this is something we are aware of, we are not. I don't want. Public come to us like, do you not know? Do you not care? I think we have to be saying these things in public so that they understand, we know we do care. We've asked the administration to put this as a priority for them, for for the administration. And that we need to be putting out into the public that this is something we're actively acting on.
So. Is the goal potentially something around for the board, a board goal to explore additional communication. Channels, conduit, vehicles, methods, avenues, that's a good word, yeah. It's a question, I I'm not trying to form a goal, I'm just trying to.
Something similar to what Dr. Mingle does with his weekly superintendent update, maybe not weekly, but maybe. Monthly, quarterly, something like that to say, you know, where our fingers are on the pulse and we're working towards these objectives.
The the current. Oh, yeah, I don't know.
But I I think I think communication is one part of how a culture is built or. Improved. Communication by itself doesn't solve culture. Culture is defined within the four walls of a building, the way that people treat each other, the way they behave and the way that they. Get to desired group outcomes. Communication itself, I think, would help, but it's not the thing that would solve culture. So I think that's one input to a larger theme, which is. Improvement of culture of our middle school.
Yep, that's completely correct. Um, we, as we've been reminded here today, we don't run the schools.
Right.
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 Um, in fact, you know, what we are obliged to do is is pretty narrow. Um. But we can direct the superintendent. Where I feel the gap is that having directed the superintendent and as to the go- the board's priorities. That from that point, the board doesn't have a mechanism to.
Sure.
That I'm aware of or that we've utilized, that is us talking back to the public again about the direction we've given to the superintendent. About things like culture and what type of. Response we're getting. It's, I mean, the superintendent's very good at communicating with the public. Kudos. Um. The board less so.
Mm hmm.
I think we're a bit of an enigma to some people.
So we have a, we have a personnel communications negotiations, I think I got it right. Goal that is draft a communications messaging slash messaging strategy for key community topics. It almost seems like that's. I- if what we're saying here is we're elevating that to maybe a board goal.
Yeah.
Think uh. For what it's worth, I'd like to better under, I know that came out in the session we had a while ago, started to. I would like when it's ready to just better understand the issue, solutions, plan, timelines. And then in that communication committee, the Mr. Keller chairs. Work through how, what the right mechanisms might be. And I think put the two together and agree in session with 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 the rest of you. What we do from there, because I think out of all of this, the the school or the middle school also will need to feel. You know, supported, respected and uh and have their plans blessed. I think between the two, we can work out the best way forward. Because I I agree, we should look at it. But I wouldn't want the impression to be that, you know, the sky's falling either because I'm not sure that's the case.
So I I think I have enough, I think that that connection to the committee goal. Um, that was only added recently, and so it hasn't really been something that's been a focus yet. And I could see the benefit of making a board level goal. Like that is that then there's a plan that goes around it and gets reported back out. It's on the agenda so that it comes up all the time. So what I'd like to. Ask is that by the, the next meeting is when you would get the actual action plans that support the district goals. So you'll know whether or not we're moving in the direction you think we need to as far as the nuts and bolts, and that'll give you a chance to get feedback and have more dialogue at the August meeting. We could take that personnel committee goal, personnel negotiations, communications. That also has the added benefit of there's a committee responsible for it. So it's very clear who's going to be the follow up group that brings it back to board meetings and everything else. So we could flush that out. We might even be able to do that at a committee meeting between now and the next board meeting. I'm not sure, but um. I think that would get it.
Mm hmm.
To and then you. It doesn't have to be final in August, we could finalize it in September if we need to, that's fine.
Yeah, I was gonna ask when the goals need to be finalized, I forgot.
There's not really a. A rule, I mean, we'd like them to be in place before the school year starts because we're working on them.
That's right, especially for this one, if we want to try and start sooner versus later. Then you you put the wheels in motion at the beginning of school year, you check in whatever the milestones are so that we can chart against progress.
Yep.
I think I I I agree. One of the challenges with that is I think we have one more board meeting before school.
Yeah, you're right.
So I think that's, and I'm I'm happy to schedule more and I'll I'll be here, but.
Yes, so maybe it's like, I don't know what our schedule is in September, maybe in the August one, we we finalize the goal, like the the metrics by which we measure. And then and then the September meeting after school's been in session for a couple of weeks or whatever, it's cemented.
Adopted.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
It's great. Anything, thank you. It's a good discussion. Uh, anything? Does anyone have additional topics, thoughts or board goals? Okay, uh, Dr. Mingle, do you have? What you need for that, or you feel comfortable? Um, do we go into district goals here?
So I would, we can, if there's things to talk about there, I would just suggest that we grab some food while we're doing that and have it, that way we can start the business meeting at six, but um. It's here. And we can continue chatting if there's other things on district goals. If there's not, we could take a recess, but however you like.
Let me ask this. For me, with the food behind us, no. District goal, so Dr. Mingle, uh, thank you for sharing those again. Are there any board members? That have? Thoughts, ideas, feedback? Comments, questions? Regarding the district goals that uh Dr. Mingle has shared? Being none, Dr. Mingle, is there anything additional with regards to just to district goals that you would like to share? I'm excited, there's food behind us. So that being said, the board will take a fifteen minute recess and we will start again at six P M for our regularly scheduled. Uh, topics, so thank you. Yeah, great.
Thank you.
Yes. Motion to return to public session.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, suspensions? Board has returned to public session. We will turn, we go to correspondence and information. I will turn it over to Dr. Mingle.
The board is in receipt of, uh, five emails, three related to the diversity club, one related to health and physical education curriculum. And one related to vandalism on a community playground. On the H I B report, there were two investigations, one at the middle school and one at Central. These are at the very end of the school year. They weren't reported on the, at the last board meeting. Uh, one investigation at the middle school was confirmed and the one investigation at Central also confirmed. Nothing to report in suspensions.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us, uh, with your time. Uh, thank you to the board members for their early arrival, early for us, four P M. for our retreat. Um, certainly always look forward to this and hopefully you were able to get a good bite to eat in our very quick, uh, recess. Uh, three things, uh, I, I need, well, two things on the agenda. Item B ten, I want to thank the Washington Hills Regional High School for their partnership. Uh, with that item, item C one, our traditional welcome. This is larger than normal. This is in, um, as we ramp up for the new school year. So welcome to all of our, uh, new employees and staff members. And the third, which is not on the agenda, I want to remind the public and the board that, uh, the filing deadline. To submit a petition to be on the ballot for this November's election as a board seat is this. I'm sorry, not this, is Monday, July thirty first at four P M. Those petitions will need to be submitted, completed to, uh, turned in. I'm sorry, to the Somerset County Clerk. Uh, the, their election division is extremely helpful. I would encourage anyone who has an interest to reach out to them, uh, for further guidance on what should be done to. Get those petitions completed. Again, those need to be signed and completed by Monday, July thirty first and turned in to the clerk's office. At four P M. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Brzee. Just a couple of quick announcements. Uh, during the summer, our community briefings are on, not on a regular schedule. We had one last week. These are all posted on the website as well, as people are aware. The next one will be on August tenth. We also have on it scheduled for August twenty fourth. Between those two is when we expect to send to all parents. Schedules, teacher assignments and bus routes. One of the commitments we made in the return to school, uh, sorry, in the rezoning process, not the return to school process. In the rezoning process was that we are aiming to have bus routes out one week. In advance of when we normally do, so that especially for those families who are going to see a new pattern. Uh, there's time for them to make arrangements and all that sort of thing. So look for that, uh, around August eighteenth. That'll be in the, the next update with the specifics. And, uh, there was one thing that was going on, uh, in board dialogue and I just wanted to clarify for everybody, um, that, uh. Last meeting, Mr. Weinstein brought up the topic of the sixth grade orientation for students rising to sixth grade at the middle school. And, and wanting to bring it into new businesses today. Uh, there were some dialogue that we had today where we clarified a couple of things that I think are good for the whole board to know. One being that the, the full orientation, what we're talking about when we say the word orientation is on the first day of school. That's a full day of. Learning how to use your locker, how to get from class to class, organizational strategies, who you go to for each kind of issue, you know, meeting all the key people that you need to meet. However, there's also a walkthrough, which is what we call a walkthrough. And those of you with elementary school children. Knew it from the elementary schools. That will still happen also at the middle school. On one of the days right before the first day of school where the doors are open, students will have their schedules. That is not a structured event where we're doing programming. But that is an open house where people can come, get comfortable with the layout. It's really, you know, it's helpful to know like where my first classroom is, that sort of thing. So. Um, both things will happen, uh, this year. So I just wanted to mention that. And then for the benefit of the public who wasn't at the retreat side. The next meeting, we will have, uh, more discussion about draft board goals, but I did just want to highlight, uh, board and district goals. But I want to highlight one because I know that there's a lot of attention in the community around the vandalism at a, at a local playground. You've seen, um, stories about the importance of the boards of education and the township committee and, and everybody in Warren. Working together on what solutions there might need to be and how we can ensure, uh, that it's a welcoming community for all. And the district goal around belonging will reflect those kinds of priorities. And so you'll hear more from us about that next meeting as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Moving on to presentations, I don't believe we have any. Same with discussions. So we will move on to committee reports. We will start with the curriculum and technology committee. Uh, Mr. Valentino.
Thank you, Mr. Brzee. The curriculum and technology committee met on June twelfth. We discussed, um, the ongoing process of the health and phys ed curriculum, which thankfully has passed since then at the twelfth, uh, board meeting. Um, we also talked about state testing and eye ready results and how we use eye ready to. Kind of project and see where our students are coming and going, um, and how it's a little more reliable than our state testing. Because the state testing parameters come and go and change and how we are continuing to use the eye ready to better track our students. Especially in the post-COVID years to try and see their growths and where they need assistance.
That's all. Thank you, Mr. Valentino. Finance, operation and security. I don't believe there was a meeting. We will move to personnel negotiations and communications committee, Ms. Keller.
Yep, we met on June sixteen. Uh, we had two main topics. We first spoke about how members of the school community can most effectively address any issues or complaints they may have. By using the documented chain of command, which essentially starts with meeting with the relevant staff member or teacher. And then the process progresses to the principal, superintendent, and ultimately the board if it's not effectively addressed at any prior point. This chain of command is intentional as families have the close relationship with building personnel and is the most efficient way to get to a resolution. We found there's a need to communicate this process in a friendly and supportive way to the school community and administration is drafting this. Uh, related, we've added language to the board agendas moving forward that remind people as to the purpose and structure of public commentary. Which you'll see for the first time on the agenda tonight near the public commentary section. Um, and then we spent the remainder of the time, uh, on the one W T E A contract negotiations and answering committee member questions about the current contract.